Irene, before we finish, would you mind going over the 2014-92, which is what we've now done with the solid waste fund?
Yes. Again, one of my charges when we left the last meeting was to research the fund, and the legal department was to research the legality of the fund. So I went back ten years and researched the fund and found out that there had been money's transferred to the solid waste because there were deficits. I think that schedule is in your packet with this yellow.
It's attached on 92.
Is this where all the law? So I went back through all the records to 2000, the last thirteen years, to show how that fund was funded and how much its expenditures were from it. So having said all that, you can see that there was $975,000 of general fund/income tax revenue that had been advanced to the solid waste fund. And the difference, and I think we discussed this, I don't mean to upset your focus, but when your vast money's alone, you know, it's not a gift, or it's usually, it hasn't been paid back. And there were some paying back, there's $400,000 paid back in 2007. So, my thought is that, you know, according to the rooms or advances, I was trying to look up the compliance supplement, which I'll give the audit to explain about advances. And usually advances are made to special revenue funds when there is a tiny issue or reimbursement that would create a deficit. To avoid audit fine, that you transfer your advanced money to these funds, and then when the monies come in, you pay it back as a loan. So what this suggests from the study is that there was $975,000 of it's been advanced to the solid waste over the years from 2000, and only $400,000 has been paid back. So there's still $575,000 that came out of the income tax, which was folded into the general fund, which is our general fund revenues, almost half of the revenue that we received every year from the income tax and the general fund. So that's why I went through and put this together, so that we could see that. Because, you know, I know there was a lot of discussion about decapitation this year. Well, actually, those dollars hadn't even started coming in, you know, you collect the year after you, the tax year. And it's not conceivable that $500,000 would be a surplus from the one year from capulation. So this will show you exactly how the deficits ran, and what used to have surplus. It seemed like they really did start turning on surplus. We had a big surplus in 2008, but that was after the 600,000 was advanced. And technically, the 600,000 should have been paid back, but because it wasn't, that left the $222,000 surplus there.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Neil.
I neglected to thank the mayor also for helping to keep the senior center of human services operating.
That was, yes.
I know you've both been working hard at Cedar, right?
Yeah, okay.
I'll check it on you.
That's okay, take off.
But when you say that, so the way I take it from what you said, correct me, for when I explain. So we don't have enough money, like when they say, "Return some of this money back to the residents, they're paying too much." That isn't a truthful statement.
No, it's not, no.
The truthful statement is, we out of the garbage that we tax money that's onto the tax bill. There's money that is still with the general fund, the city, for doing their job.
For subsidizing and helping them doing this purely, exactly. And I could say, this tells you that. It tells you there's a total revenue, which means the money, and of course, some of this came through fee for service before we started the tax assessment. And my understanding is that the assessment started back in '06 or sometime, but the only thing I could find in records was '07. So I started a column, and, you know, may be a flop, but the thing that's definite is that the total revenue that came in, that's a definite. So, you know, and I tried to separate between charges for services, which means that they paid directly to the city, versus when it was taxed, those sort of assessments. So as you can see, as you add the two together, it makes up the total revenue that was used for that fund, okay? Which over the years has been $18 million. And then if you look at the expenses, it shows that there was the expenses that were paid out of the revenue in addition to monies that, and then, of course, the $400,000 that was paid back. So the total expenses to the fund was the $175,000. Those numbers are definite, okay? So the difference is that there's a $753,000 excess in the fund at this point, okay? And I reserve some, which you'll see on the next sheet, so that we don't have a deficit to pay for the upcoming months, because we'll reimburse six months behind.
Which is the next page.
Yeah. So right on the page behind, the reason, what you'll see, I sort of plotted out the receipts of the assessments and how we would spend it. Okay, let's see here. So I started with the current, as of 10/31, the fund dollars of $885,000 in that fund, okay? And then to November and December payment, I showed the $377,000 out of that $885,000. And the January, June, March, because like I say, typically, we receive our assessments in March and September. It was noted, though, by Council Blair that this year they were late, the September monies didn't come until November, and the March money was late coming, you know. So this is, when they're on schedule, it will come in March and in September, that's when we get our six-month assessments. We do not get a monthly payment from them. It comes every six months as we pay our income property taxes. And that's the money they use, but it's something that they collected, they send to us. So in looking at this, like I say, exactly, I went through to reserve some money to pay us through March, because otherwise it'd be a deficit there, the fund would, if it just spent all the money. And to show that we can support paying back the monies. So even with that, you can see that at the end of the contract, which I took through '16, that's when the contract ends with Waste Management, the fund, I have about $500-plus thousand, which is ironic, it's about the money that's due back to the general fund.
Now, is there any way, when we get, when we get the money from the property tax, is there any way that the finance department, the mayor, can figure out how much services was rendered for them, our services? And then deduct it because there is a deficit and keep updated for every six months?
Well, sure, that shows, like, you see on this page here, there's a payback, you know, to show in this column here, as money goes back to the general fund. And so as it increases, the last column will decrease. I mean, this is all like a tally, you know.
Irene, I thought you said in sorry, that when we get the lump sum from the county, it doesn't differentiate how much is coming to us out of our share of property tax, or how much of that fund is actually from the garbage fund? Does it equalize us? Do you give us?
Oh, yes, itemized list for all the assessments.
The grass and everything's?
Grass, yes, all of that is itemized, right. So we know exactly how much was collected. When they send us throughout the song, they send what they call a schedule. And on that schedule, it tells how much was for each of the different assessments that we filed in September, you know, when you have to certify for the second Monday. So for the grass, even nuisance abatement that we filed with the police department, the boarding up from the service department, it's all itemized. So we know exactly how much, and that's why I was able to, you know, see how much we received from the assessments in this first yellow column, because it's actually on the, I mean, in the assessment column, because it's listed on that sheet.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
See, the last time a transfer was made was 2007. Are there any statutes?
Well, there wasn't a transfer, it was a repayment of an advance, and I even talked to the, you know, if I even talked with the auditor, they went back to their 2007 records to document that it was says it's a repayment of advance. Transfers are gifts, advances are loans, which have to be paid back. So I want to interchange the words advance and defer.
So the last advance was $600,000 worth in 2007?
Correct.
Since then, there have been none?
You're correct.
And so the fund's been solvent since we switched to assessing property tax values?
Not especially, if you look at the, that says the second to the last column, it shows the total revenue minus total expenses. For example, in 2009, there was a deficit of $120,000.
Right.
So it hasn't been solvent, you know.
On the whole, it has been solvent.
Well, yeah, it had a balance, because you have the money that paid from the general fund, correct.
So the second question is, regarding advances, is there a statute of limitations, a limit, time limit within which you need to pay back an advance?
Uh, back to my knowledge.
Okay. Now, would it be, prior to 2007, this was not, or prior to 2008, the fees were collected differently? They weren't a special assessment on the property values, on the property taxes?
That's my understanding.
So does that affect paying back an advance for monies that weren't collected in a particular way, with monies that are now collected in a different way?
No, the definition of the interaction or function of an advance is that the general fund owns some special revenue fund monies.
Right.
Doesn't matter how the general fund is funded, it could be a grant. I mean, for example, which should be before this body right now, as I look at the few grants that we do have, the juvenile diversion, and maybe the dare, or whatever, if, for example, there is, and then the area agency, I mean, there probably would be a deficit, a cash deficit, because it's, you know, the money comes in the following month. So therefore, at the end of the year, those deficits are supposed to be cleared out in the general, the special revenue funds. And the way that happens is that the general fund advances money to these funds, and that's, those funds that you see on that fiscal watch, that's part of the problem. And in the audit, that's a fine, because they should not show deficits. And then when the money comes in, say, the following year, that fund pays back the general fund, it's like a loan. And that's typically the way the governmental economy goes. And so, you know, there may be something that I have to bring before this body next week, and we're still trying to determine what's outstanding, and it should be approved by this body. The transfer, the advance to the fund should be approved by this body, the repayment should be approved. I mean, you don't just advances, so technically, the $600,000, somewhere, there should be some legislation saying that this body approved the general fund advancing that money.
Well, that's what it says.
And then when the $400 came back, there should be some legislation saying, from this body, saying that the general fund was to be repaid. So I don't know if there were or not.
And that's exactly what 2014-92 states.
Right.
So that works.
Well, we're creating a special section.
Right.
So that this happens every year.
Right.
There's no question.
Yeah, I mean, it happens just like we do appropriations, and it's all part of the year-end functions, you know, in commerces and advances and transfers, and all of these should be functioned as part of the housekeeping for the end of the year, as we're doing the amendments and the temporary budget, which is, you know, falls on to the year.
I think we're pretty well clear. If something comes up, you'll email us or let us know.
In regards to...
Well, you thought that there might be something coming within the next couple of weeks.
Oh, you mean the minus, oh, yeah.
Correct. And we still have that question with the...
The board? Well, I sent you this email, I mean, you know...
Yeah, not a very nice, I mean...
I know, that's just weird, but that's why I sent it to you directly, so you could see that I attempted to.
You did. And what he said was, "Look at your contract."
And I haven't had time to see, there may be a contract.
There is, there is. We have, we have, I looked at the contract.
Right.
He didn't answer the question.
I know.
But we'll try again, we'll try again. Okay, we, thank you, Irene. We'd like to move on to future...
Madam Chair, are we moving on from the budget?
Yes, actually.
I think there's still more questions.
More questions?
Yeah, I got some questions, but I have a question about the conversation that two of y'all just had, it seemed like y'all knew what y'all were talking about, but nobody else did.
Well, Irene had said that she would send a request to the Board of Health.
Budget commission, to the budget commission.
Okay.
Because there the funds had to be.
That set the, that set the amount. Because we looked at the contract from the Board of Health, which was, I think, $45,001 per one year?
I think that contract was $88,000.
Eighty-eight, which was budgeted ninety.
It was based on the census, and 382 a person.
Correct, the census. Which I wondered if it was going to be according to the most recent census, because it looked like it was rather high. So Irene sent this email with the question to the gentleman, and he emailed her back and said, "Look at your contract." That was just, it was not a very good response, I'm disappointed with that. All right, we don't want to stay here much, much longer, but we have...
Who says?
...questions. I do, I do.
Okay.
I do, we could go on and on and on and on and on, but I think your questions need to be, you know, to the point, and everyone who has had a chance to flesh out what they don't understand or need to have clarified. That's a question?
Question kind of weak before the meeting.
And I think I did mention to everyone that you could probably email Irene, she's very good about answering emails, so if you have specific questions that you're still unsolicited about, that that would be one way to get your answers. And Irene would send it to all of us if it's a pertinent question. So I, I'll go around the table, is there anyone else who has a question that is concluding?
Question, I was going to come and just...
I'm just asking.
I got a, I got a couple quick ones, I've been doing...
Go ahead, Mr. Jackson.
I think it'll be quick. This was back paper here. On page four.
Expenses or...
Expenses. And there's some categories on here and others, but like with the mechanics, I see in fifteen, no, there's a quite a substantial difference from what it was in fourteen. Is that because of less employees and so, what's the number of employees? And I'm gonna send that, I'm just gonna say, I wanna, I wanna send this question to you.
I can answer it, yes.
Oh, okay.
One mechanic was laid off, so there's the one now versus two.
So we just have one mechanic?
Correct. Well, it's classified in that department.
Actually, that's not true. If he wasn't laid off, he quit.
I'm sorry, did I say he was designed?
He quit. Okay, so, so we have one mechanic now?
Correct. This happened quite a while ago, October or...
Finance department, we have three employees.
Yes.
Legal?
Two.
Two?
Three.
And those three, full-time?
No.
No, the answer's no.
Only one.
So how many, how many?
The answer to the question.
Our time.
So it's one full-time?
One full-time.
And two part-time, okay.
And two part-timers give no benefits other than, no benefits whatsoever.
And another one is land and buildings. Ten million employees?
Two.
Two, full-time?
Yes.
Thank you.
That's it?
Permission?
Okay, Mr., Brownlee, you have more, another question?
Yes, there may not be questions, but rather suggestions. One moment, please. Right now, Linda is working on negotiations, the human services director is working on negotiations with the, one of the organization possibly taking over the responsibilities.
Benjamin Rose.
Benjamin Rose. And they will need the service center to be funded for a certain amount of time until they can obviously take it over, if they decide to do that. And what we will need to be cognizant of is how much money that will take. Of course, we have to know how long first, but then, if it reaches a certain point, we'll have to cut expenses more, it sounds, it sounds like. If we have to fund it for six months going off of this year's appropriations, it would be about $162,000 to fund it for six months. Secondly, we have a real problem in our building department in keeping up with rental inspections, providing point of sale and rental inspections in a timely manner. And speaking with the, with Jeff Velarsky, President of MBIS, he, he stated that another point of sale rental inspector would cost roughly about $65,000. And in talking with our building commissioner, Mr. Lacanti, he said that one more point of sale rental inspector would bring them up to speed, it would get them within a week turnaround for those who are looking for point of sale and rental inspections, and it would also even help them with some of the other duties in the building department. It would free up Darrell during slow times to have even more time to do tall brass and things of that nature complaints. So that's $65,000. That's something that I think that we really need to consider. If we don't keep the building department going, operating at a certain level, then we're going to simply push more and more people out of the city, whether they're landlords or potential homeowners, even possibly renters, because I would imagine that our housing stock is going to continue to decline if we don't have enough manpower in the building department to keep up with people maintaining their homes, giving enough inspections, enough complaints, responses to complaints. So I would encourage us to look at, in 2015, finding a way to hire someone, another person on, as a point of sale rental inspector. And to consider, how long is it going to take to transition a senior center, and how much exactly, how much roughly is that going to cost us? Because we don't want to shoot in the dark here, because we're, we're on, we're on the knife's edge, we're real close here. So we want to be ensuring that we have enough money to fund the things that are necessary. And also, there is no buffer for any, anything that might pop up, anything at all that might come up, equipment that might be needed, there's no buffer for those things. As I understand it right now, there is no contingency figured into this budget within the general fund. So I'm concerned that this budget that we're proposing for 2015 should be looked at further to cover these concerns.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Tony.
I think that if Council, actually, this is just first statement, if we could collect $50,000 in foreclosure filings without aggressively sending letters and chasing these people, I think that if Council wants to band together, since we do not have the help in the building department, and we don't have Leslie any further to assist in contacting the people that need to be in order for them to pay their $250 fee. And I think that if that was, since that fee has been almost tripled, I think that there's a source of revenue there that is totally untapped, and I think that that may be enough to, one, how we bring on another inspector, and/or to generate, not a complete buffer, but at least generate some funds to the general fund for whatever means are still necessary. There is a lot of abandonment that's out there, and there's still a lot of foreclosures. And I think we have to step up our game a little bit. And if there are, if there's a lack of employees anywhere, if there's some way that we could fill that void, because we are city employees, especially that would generate revenue, I think that that's an idea to bring forth before Council.
I think we have, we have some ideas, just rambling around here, some of them require a lot of discussion, and that, I know Linda is, is involved, and very much so. And I think that it's much too early to talk about funding something that is just kind of floating around in the, in the atmosphere at this point, but I definitely, we do have lots of opportunities, and I think if we get focused, and that's one of my goals for the new year, and I know it's Tony's as well, with the building, housing issues, and to get really focused on the kinds of things that we can accomplish, and working together as a group, definitely. There's, there's merit to Mr. Brownlee's suggestions. With that, I'd like to move on. Thank you, Irene.
Well, my thing, Madam Chair.
Okay, I'm trying to move on.
Decimation to Mayor, and our negotiations with Metro, Cell Tower, and Build Boards, so everything is...
We've mentioned that several times.
Yeah, everything's mixed up, and when it all comes together, it might be money.
Absolutely, absolutely. Everything, everything is, as I said, it's kind of floating around here, everything is pending.
This is a temporary budget, guys.
Say what?
This isn't just a temporary budget?
Yes, temporary.
So I have three months to work on this person, the senior chairman.
You have your pink sheet and all of the legislation underneath it, and we will be able to look at the cell tower and the contract for the property demolition, which we'd like to get shuttle-ready. The only other thing that we have on the agenda tonight is the legislation for the zoning change, which is Hertz, and that has been up in the air for a couple of months, quite a few.
Yes, and we're hoping to get that passed as soon as possible.
Does everyone know?
These are two national...
Does everyone know what's going on with Hertz? Any of those of us that attend the planning and zoning meetings are fully aware of it, but is there anything that you'd like to know about it before we discuss?
They're two national companies, and we need to lose either one of them. And for you, for those of you who don't know what the second one is, it's the finest building, there's a potential buyer there, and that is also a national company, that blocksite and Hoardingsale, and they're also going to be building, so that's a good thing. They acquired the lots, and they're both big companies, we've been working with them. And there is another zoning proposal that Council will see in the next month, to change some zoning in the Dunham area to preserve those neighborhoods and from used cars, because we're looking at national companies, not the mom and pop used cars.
So with that, are there any lingering questions?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brownlee?
Concerning the zoning changes, the proposed zoning changes.
Correct.
One thing I would put forward is that we have, we're changing the general commercial zoning to include, as a permitted use, used cars. Now, the section along Broadway is general commercial, but is additionally, is additionally the Broadway overlay, the Broadway corridor overlay, which has its own regulations. And I would suggest looking at that, what those regulations are, and providing for businesses along Broadway to open up a legitimate used car lot. And providing for the requirements to do so, whatever would seem advisable, so that we so that we can maintain compliance whenever we do allow used car, um, sales in the general commercial district and in the Broadway corridor overlay. Uh, as of right now, I don't know that we have any specific regulations written up concerning uh, used car sales, what maybe frontage would need to be or size of the lot would need to be or any of those types of things. So, um, that's something that I think we need to consider simultaneously because once we grant the permission for, um, used car sales, we'll want to make sure we have the regulations in place to control that.
And, and that's a great idea and we have been talking about this in planning and zoning for several months now because we want to eliminate spot zoning, which is what, which is actually what has been going on and causing some of the dilemma that you just mentioned. So we absolutely are going to charge the planning and zoning folks with creating sensible guidelines and still maintaining the Broadway corridor.
And should I speak on things?
Certainly.
Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission, um, they, they are moving in the zoning changes in different phases. And I want to use the word phases because we, we don't want to confuse people with the different phases. The first phase is to allow, um, used car sales in, in commercial. When they decided that that's what they would like to recommend, they noticed that different areas of the city are, have commercial zoning and they don't want used car sales in, like the Dunham Classic, for instance. So that second phase is to, um, change that to neighborhood commercial. There's a little piece of commercial up on Northfield that looked like it was spot zoning. So that's phase two, to protect some of the neighborhoods so that you don't get the mom and pop in areas like Turney Town. Then another suggestion that we've had in addition to the Broadway corridor with used cars is to move the map, um, move the map, make a map change of the Broadway corridor to move it more conducive around Maple Town, which would allow the used cars in the commercial area. However, Mr. Brownlee is correct because if that were allowed, they would want to make some regulations as to a size of a lot, of a used car, the lot could only be so big so that you don't get the little tiny lots selling them with twenty cars.
Right.
And another suggestion we had from the Police Department is we're looking at, um, not permitting bars and taverns in neighborhood commercial districts because of the problems we're having with some of the bars and taverns. So we're looking at different phases of zoning changes, but they have to go in phases so that you're not confused. You can't just throw everything in a pot and say, say pass it. You know, we want to give you a good, we, we're required to give you a good reason. So that's.
As, as we said previously, we've got a number of things on the, on the docket and we just need to keep working and it seems so slow because these meetings just go on and on and on, especially with planning and zoning.
We're required to send out notices and this, um, second phase, I think I sent out two hundred and twenty-five notices.
So if some of you've got questions from your neighbors or your districts wanting to know if your property value is going up or down, the answer is no. Okay, uh, with that, I'm going to, oh.
I'm sorry, one more minute.
One more minute.
I would just like to speak to Council about, um, two thousand and fourteen ninety-three. It is, uh, hopefully your support for the time-sensitive contracts with the Cuyahoga County Land Bank. It is a contract that was sent out to all the municipalities urging them to contract with the county for them to be the point person for all phases of demolition, um, which is including, you know, the lot of preparedness after as well as hiring the contractor and, and holding the bond and scheduling the demolition because it's something that some of the smaller municipalities don't have. The, um, application needs to be in by the end of February, that is the deadline. There are a lot of municipalities that are probably gonna be submitting ahead of time. Um, Maple Heights is gonna be included with that list. And, um, the first phase of this, unless it does have to go through re-readings, it's gonna be tough because we need to have this passed. And the county needs to know that we're on board with them doing the demolition, especially with the amount of homes that everybody's gonna be submitting.
So it would be vital if we got in line first, is there going to be that kind of?
It would be vital if, well, you know what?
We just got to.
Yeah, we did.
Everybody just got this at the same time.
Right.
Um, how they're going to pick and choose those personal projects, I don't know, but it's good for them to know that we're on board as one of the, um, fifty-seven, fifty-nine municipalities that are submitting this application.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Thank you all for coming.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Uh, you said eighty-nine is being withdrawn.
Yes.
Uh, what was the reason for that again?
Because there was so, there was so much dissension over it and it, and so, so many different questions and we have replaced it with something that makes more sense and is actually better legislation.
Uh, why, why is that better legislation?
Because, yeah, I think we just looked at it with, with Irene going over and over and over the, the questions here, that it's going to be legislation that we will look at every year and be able to adjust the budget appropriately. Okay, at this time it's, uh, no, it's seven fifty, it's seven fifty-two. Thank you.